Good afternoon, I'd like to call the July 19th Board Meeting of the Johnson County Community College Trustees to order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here. At this time we'll have the roll call and recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Tom Lester, Brian Batliner, Dennis Batliner, Jalissa White, Anne Pesha, Cheryl Batliner, Katie Masurko, Blake Coger, and Tammy Balzo.
Thank you. Awards and recognitions?
Dr. Cook, we have no awards or recognitions this evening.
Thank you very much. The next item is the open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise subject to review by the college or board. There are five registered speakers this evening. You will be called to the podium in order of the registration prior to beginning comments. We ask you to state your name, address, city, and state. Many of you have spoken on this topic before, and with the number of five, I'm going to limit your remarks to four minutes tonight rather than five. So, Tom, I think you're the first speaker. Please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Tom Lester. I live in Lee Summit, Missouri. I'm a former employee of Johnson County Community College. I was an employee here from 2012 till 2016. It's quite ironic, the last time I was in front of the board, I was here to honor our women's track team that committed defeat that they'd never been done in school's history, winning the Triple Crown. What you may ask is, the Triple Crown in track and field and cross country? The girls' team won the regional title both cross-country, indoor and outdoor track. That was in the fall of 2011, spring of 2012. Am I right with that? And, never been done before, and we were in front of the board. The same feat we did two years later in 2014. So, it's quite ironic, I'm standing here for only the second time on the dismissal or disbandment of the track team. Twenty-three years ago, I was at Belen Junior College, and the same thing happened to their track team, and I was asked by the president not to come and speak in front of the board. I was the head coach at that time. No such request was made by anyone on this board this time. So, I felt that I should come here and just say how I'm confused how Johnson County -- I'm a Jackson County resident. I understand some of the things over there that don't get done. But I always took pride in when I drove across the state line, I entered Johnson County, my daughters went to school here, go to KU, went to Emporia State. Things got done over here. Things got accomplished over here. And I was totally taken aback when I left here to go to take another coaching job, for whatever reason, that this track program had many accomplishments. One of them, many of them, and I even brought, when I was on staff here, I brought an Olympian to our program that helped us coach for a year, Maurice Mitchell. He ran for me, had a race out, went to Florida State, came here. So, we had an Olympian on staff, and it was quite an experience for our student athletes to have an Olympian part of our track and field staff. So, it just concerns me, once again, track and field, a sport that probably generates more participation in our high school throughout this area than any other sport, men and women combined. Why are we getting rid of that program? And it just concerns me that Johnson County, one of the most affluent communities in the United States, there's not a vision for the athletic department to sort or have resources to fund all programs. Seven programs, athletic programs now have been cut from this college in the last six, seven years. I cannot understand why. The vision, where is the vision in the athletic department to find people that can fund these programs in this community? I know there are people in this community that would love to help these programs out, golf, tennis, track and field. These are all sports that men and women, they may not be, they're not going to want to be professionals, but they enjoyed the college experience. Now, where does a young man, young woman go if he wants to run track in Kansas City? Kansas City, Kansas Community College, they disbanded. I guess Johnson County didn't have a solution. They didn't have a solution over there, I guess Johnson County said, "Well, if they did it, we're going to do it." I don't know if that was the reason, but I always thought Johnson County was the beacon of light in junior colleges throughout the nation. One quick story before I leave. In 2012 Olympic trials in Eugene, Oregon, I went to have a pizza at the Pizza Town, one of the most famous places to eat pizza in Eugene, Oregon. I was working at Johnson County at the time. I had a Johnson County shirt on, and I had a gentleman from Cornell University say, "You coach at Johnson County?" I said, "Yes, I do." He goes, "I heard that's the number-one academic junior college in the United States." I felt very proud at that time, representing Johnson County. Today, I don't know how proud I feel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you for the service you've given to this college in the past, and you certainly did have some very, very good teams and athletes. Appreciate it. Next is Brian Batliner.
I have some handouts here. Start them down here. I hope I have enough, I have ten of them. Some numbers that I'll let you all look at. Brian Batliner, 11420, West 104th Street, Overland Park, Kansas, 66214. I apologize ahead of time if I speak quickly, I've got a lot to say in a short period of time.
Please proceed.
Okay. I'm really excited to be here. I recently moved back to this community after four years away, and I'm excited to finally have the opportunity to come here and share my perspective on the choice to cut the track and cross-country programs, and more importantly, how that choice pertains to the very important budget discussions you all will be having this evening. I grew up in this community. I graduated from Shawnee Mission South High School, where I was admittedly a very below-average student, yet by the grace of God, had a talent for distance running. And what that meant for me was that JCCC was by far my best option to continue my education. And I'm grateful beyond measure for the opportunity I received here. The coaches and the professors who inspired me, and everything good that unfolded in my life since then, I cannot be grateful enough for. Now, as you all might know from the emails I've sent you, after spending six years here at JCCC as an assistant coach, I went to Phoenix, Arizona, to take an opportunity in the Maricopa Community College District, at a school by the name of Paradise Valley Community College. There, I served a role as co-head track coach and student athlete academic coordinator. My decision to leave here was a tough one. I have a huge heart for the city and this college, but ultimately, my decision to go to Phoenix provided invaluable lessons and perspectives which ultimately strengthened my belief in the exceptionalism of this campus and this community. In Maricopa, my athletics colleagues would often refer to our programs as the "have-nots" of the community college athletics world, while the colleges such as JCCC were the "haves." This was due to the substantial financial disparity which existed with regards to supporting our students. It is for this reason that when I heard in March of 2016 that JCCC was cutting the track program, I was utterly dumbfounded. I remember calling Dr. Weber in an effort to understand the mechanics behind the decision, and after I heard him out, I told him then what I will tell all of you now, which is, this decision has nothing to do with funding and everything to do with culture. And that's sad, because eliminating track and field and allocating that money to other programs does nothing to change the culture and thought process which led to this decision. In Maricopa, we were forced to be creative with our programs in order to maintain a winning culture in the face of meager budgets. Tonight, I've provided you with these numbers. I'm happy to go over any of them with you anytime where I got those from. Those are the Paradise Valley Community College numbers. I don't need to go through all of them, but roughly, to sum it up for the public, this college is spending five times what peer institutions in Maricopa are spending on its athletics programs. Five times, and that hasn't changed. Despite this exorbitant difference in spending, Paradise Valley Community College, for example, has won 11 national championships. JCCC has also won 11, however, five of those were in sports which we no longer maintain here. I provide these numbers as a clear evidence of the fact that this college is beyond capable of maintaining all of its athletics programs and still competing at a high level. To that point, I refuse to stand idly by and say nothing as we cut seven programs, as Tom mentioned, over a five-year period and cite a lack of funding, when I know beyond a doubt that we can do better than that. The point that we have all been on a mission to get across all along is that cutting the track and cross-country programs leaves an irrevocable hole in the fabric of this campus and this community. You cannot calculate the impact that will be lost, and no amount of increased enrollment or facility improvements or wayfinding structures, as valuable as they are, they are valuable, none of that's going to bring back the unique opportunity that this program provided. We're not saying that everything you're embarked on with the facilities master plan does not paint a bright future for the college. We believe it does. What we're asking is that you stop and give serious, serious thought to what we are all losing in the process. The fact is that these programs provided a unique avenue to an education for one of this campus's most diverse student groups. They drew athletes from all over the metro and the state and the country and even the world to this unique campus, to this most exceptional of campuses and communities. That is what we're here fighting to maintain. I've seen the impact of these programs with my own eyes, and you're going to hear a great story about one from one of those athletes later. I've seen it as a coach and as an athlete, and I can tell you without a doubt that reinstating them is a pretty worthwhile venture to undertake.
Brian, if you could bring closure, you're over four.
Okay. I leave you with a question, a couple of questions. Just how innovative are we here? This is a challenge. Is there a way to reinstate track and maintain these programs for future generations? Is there a way? Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Next is Jalissa?
Jalissa.
Jalina White? Sorry.
Hi, everyone. I'm just here to tell you my atypical story here at Johnson County.
If you could give your address, that'd be great.
I live in Payola, Kansas now. When I was here, I was in Gardner. I am the first person in my family to go to college. The plan was to go to Wichita, had a full scholarship there, and things happened, and I ended up becoming pregnant with my beautiful daughter, Maya. So, track was done. I was done. Johnson County was the next best option. Nursing was the next best option. And I called Puch Batliner, and I was like, you know, is there any possibility that I could join the team? To which he stated, "It's going to be tough. It's going to be hard, but you can do it if you stick your mind to it." And due to that, I was able to stay on the track team, and I was able to go to regionals, go to nationals, place in nationals. I also competed while in nursing school. This school is an atypical school. You guys see so many different, diverse, and different athletes, students, and I think the track team gave me that ability to succeed. If not for that, I wouldn't be where I'm at right now. I would have just been another student, another number. I could have very easily just been another statistic, another young African-American woman who ended up knocked up in layman's terms, but I didn't, and that's because of this school, and that's because of this program. I am now a NICU nurse proudly. I am on the transport team. I love what I do. I love this community. I love this college, and I love the impact that this college had on not only my life but others. I have others that come up to me and say, "You did it. You drive me to be able to do it." I'm married, I have two beautiful children, and if not for their ability to drive me, they called me to check on me. D1 colleges don't really care about what happens to me. If I would have dropped out, I would have dropped out. I would have been just another statistic again. Puch Lester called me up, "Hey, are you okay?" I'm like, "My daughter's sick. I'm sorry. I've been out for an entire week." And he said, "Okay. Get better. Get your daughter better, and we'll see you." Pushed me to make it, and because of that, I was able to compete and place nationally twice. I am currently the indoor stadium champion in the triple jump, and blessed to be able to say I did that. But if not for this community, if not for this team, I would not have been able to drive myself to get there and drive others to get there. The team has impacted many people's lives, not just my own, and I just think that the community itself thrives on this culture. And I think these coaches and this community would just be so much better if we all just kind of came together and realized that it's more than just the numbers. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Blake Coger.
Blake Coger, 24853, 148th Court, Alatha, Kansas. At the end of the May meeting, and one of the few statements anyone from the board has really made, Trustee Cook said that he was scheduled to be at the meeting along with Trustee Musil that we tried to set up, and it ended up canceling. He said, quote, "I felt badly about that, but that was a decision that evidently the track group did not want to hear all of the decisions that went into that process," end quote. He went on to state that he thinks the board made the decision in the best interest of the college, moving 50 years ahead, talked about the front door of the college, all of that as if that really had anything to do with our efforts, because there are numerous doors to the college, and really, the location of the track doesn't matter. But he was right. We didn't want to talk, we didn't want to hear about all of the decisions that went into the process. We wanted to have a meaningful discussion. That's not asking for much, really. We've heard ad nauseam the reasons for the decisions, and literally, none of it adds up, and so that doesn't help anything. At the behest of the board, we've, in addition to other meeting requests we had, we requested this additional meeting. In planning that, we went out of our way to arrange a meeting with some highly influential community stakeholders who have unparalleled experience and perspective to provide their insight on the importance of these programs and the many possibilities to maintain them. As of March 21st, we had the following lined up. A local high school, a local coach in the Shawnee Mission School District with over 30 years of experience, and one of the absolute most successful and influential educators in our community. A local coach and former head of the Kansas High School Coaches Association. A local coach in the Alatha School District with over three decades as an educator in our community. A local educator from a neighboring high school. And a local coach of one of the largest youth clubs in Johnson County. While all of these people are coaches, you shouldn't continue to fall into the trap of thinking that these are just track people, as Trustee Musil has stated, or however else we have phrased this. These are educators of young lives in our community. They've had positive influence on thousands of youth in our community, and their voices should be heard in this issue. One of those coaches who had planned to take a half-day off of work and attend this meeting told us that the day before the meeting, he was talking to another coach planning on meeting, and they wanted to know if the meeting will be, quote, "We hear you and we are considering," or a "Shut the hell up and we're done with you" type of meeting, end quote. On March 21st, Dr. Weber got back to us and said the meeting would be arranged, but stated that, quote, "It is our hope that miscommunications about the decision can be cleared up at this meeting. Please note that we do not plan to entertain future program considerations as part of this meeting. As we've stated publicly in previous conversations, the decision has been made by the college, and the college has already moved forward with resource allocations as a result of the decision," end quote. With that, we had our answer for the coach's question of what this meeting was designed to be. From there, the discussions toward the meeting devolved quickly and for good reason. We're trying to go out of our way to do the due diligence the administration didn't do to involve voices that should have been involved from the beginning, and you are all clear, you don't have any interest in discussing this. You never have, not with alumni, coaches, community members, no one. I've been beating this drum for months now. It's clear to me that the administration has made this decision on their own and only considered viewpoints that match their own. All we wanted is open dialogue, and it's clear that's one-sided. As evidenced in the email sent to the Board of Trustees before the March meeting whereby Chris Gray provided the verbatim speech that Dr. Cook delivered to us after the Walk the Track event, Gray stated that, quote, "We will have a statement for the board meeting Thursday for Dr. Cook, and President Sobchak provides some information and facts to some misleading statements that may have circulated, and also to close the door on this topic," end quote. Close the door? I mean, we've been trying like crazy to keep that door open, because it matters. It matters to a lot of people, including all of those willing to attend that meeting. Again, not because of our own self-interest, as President Sobchak so ridiculously claimed, but because we genuinely care about the education and experiences of our youth. It would be nice if you all saw that, looking out from your ivory towers. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Next speaker is Dennis Batliner.
Kind of narrow aisle ways back there. Dennis Batliner, 10,000 Perry Drive, Overland Park, Kansas, 66212. I'm here to again address your decision to end the track and field and cross-country programs and remove the outdoor track. Many times, I've heard that the decision has been made, dollars have been reallocated, and the college is moving forward for the next 50 years. I agree with long-range planning, but I also believe in flexibility. We can't be sure what will happen next week, much less what education will look like over the next 50 years. Yet repeatedly, I have heard and read statements by you that indicate a lack of flexibility and reassessment of decisions. From an internal email by President Sobchak to the board concerning the track issue, he states, quote, "We will increase student fees, in other words, raise tuition on 19,000 students to fund track scholarships for approximately 50 students and the track program. Please note that this added expense will go on perpetually and grow as a competitive nature or arms race in collegiate sports gains further momentum. Additionally, we will have to increase the general fund to cover unbudgeted costs. Likewise, this increase will also go on perpetually and grow equally as fast." Now, I have a number of issues with that statement, but I'll only say that I cannot imagine that the faculty at this institution teaches students that making a decision is for perpetuity, that things cannot be altered, that a rate of change should be extrapolated to infinity. That's why we have education, to learn when and how to change things for the better. JCCC has now eliminated somewhere around nine sports, track and field, cross-country, golf, men's, women's, all that, with track and field being the largest. So, you've eliminated the potential students on campus, the students that market JCCC nationwide, students that are mentored daily by coaches. But over that same period of time, enrollment here has decreased, and it's budgeted down again 2% this year, while the county population has gone up quite a bit. Certainly, there are multiple reasons for the decreased enrollment, some not controllable by you, but some are. If the trend in managing community colleges is to a corporate model, these decisions seem odd. Corporations having decreasing customers and rising budget expenditures typically have longevity problems. JCCC has declining customers and rising budget expenditures. But this is not a for-profit corporation. This is a community college, funded by 80%, of which by those of us in the community, not those directly paying tuition for their education. And that's fine. We want everyone to have opportunities. So, spending $110 million on a new front door on a bunch of buildings may be a great thing, and in 50 years, other decisions like eliminating sports programs may look good equally as well. But nothing that I've seen or heard from you indicates that will necessarily be true. Just as you found somehow magically, $7.4 million a while back to further enhance a student center, the budget can be altered to fund track and field and cross-country and a new track. It just takes some flexibility in your decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate your time. That concludes the open forum session, and I hereby close the open forum. I will just, I will just say, I guess, in a comment, Tom, this is your first presentation here. Several of you have spoken several months. There's no doubt that the history of the track and program has been exceptional. I just came back from a national ACCT meeting with representations from all over the country. And as we talk about their ongoing commitment to sports, in some states where you'd think they'd had a lot of activity, they've eliminated their programs in community colleges. Some have, don't have any sports but intermural. Now, that doesn't support your case or support our case of being flexible and putting track back in the program. I would just say that, one of you made the comment, that was an administrative decision. The Board of Trustees made that decision. We stand by that decision in terms of how we look at all the programs we offer for all of our students and all of our programs, and we have felt that that was the appropriate decision at this time going forward. You have deep passion. You've been here several times. I appreciate your commitment to the sport. We've had people talk about our own relatives and friends that have been in the track program and athletics, and we understand your passion for that. College lobbyist report. Mr. Carter is not here tonight.
Mr. Carter is not here tonight. Members of the board have received his written statement. Any questions to that?
No.
Trustee Musil.
Could I just mention something in response to the open forum, since my name was invoked during that? I disagree with the comment, I think it was Blake made, that the board hasn't made any statements on this. I spoke to it in January, I spoke to it in March, I spoke to it in April, at length. I've responded to all the emails. The issue here is whether there can be agreement with the priorities of the campus as established by this board. It's not a funding issue in that Johnson County can't afford whatever we want to afford. I've said that before on this topic. Of all the things we could do, what should we do for all of the students so that they have an ability to afford this and not pay student fees for other students to succeed? And I agree about the issue about the not having an overarching idea about the athletic program, because the more I learn about this, and I'm as avid a sports fan as there is in the world, particularly around K-State sports, all of them. I watch the high jumper in the NCAA championships because there's a K-State guy in there. But we spend an inordinate amount of money on students in certain programs that aren't academic, and those are good programs and they help kids get better. But we have decided as a board, and, you know, to say we look out from our ivory tower, everybody on this board works in this community, volunteers in this community, serves on charities in this community, have had kids go through school in this community, so I don't really appreciate that kind of comment that there's been some lack of thought. It's a difference of opinion on priorities and judgments, and you have every right to come up and disagree with my priorities and my judgments. That's absolutely what you have the right to do, and you've done it effectively. But I think, I've spoken on this, I think the board has acted on it, and I guess that's enough said.
Thank you. Back to the college lobbyist report. I really appreciate the email regarding the process that went through for the debate held last week for candidates for the governor's position on the Republican side, and I just think it's important for us to know, in case you hear, why did that happen on campus? They rented the facilities, like any other group can rent the facilities, and so I appreciated the detail of that report. Anything else on lobbyist report? Committee reports and recommendations, Trustee Lindstrom.
Management.
Just one second here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The management committee met at 8:00 AM on Tuesday, July 3rd, here in the boardroom. Information related to that meeting begins on page one and runs through page 17 of the board packet. The management committee received several presentations from staff. Barbara Larson, Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services, presented information on an agreement with Basar Linwood School District regarding drivers' education training. This agreement can be found in the consent agenda on page 35 of the board packet. Tom Clayton, Director of Insurance and Risk Management, presented his semi-annual property and liability insurance program update. Tom does a wonderful job at that. Tom provided updates on our risk management program. Tom provided updates on our risk management program to the management committee each year, and it's clear that he does an excellent job in serving the campus and in controlling costs. Rachel Leers, Associate Vice President of Financial Services and Chief Financial Officer, gave an update on Johnson County's assessed valuation for the final determination of the college's ad valorem tax revenue. Jim Fieker, Director of Procurement Services, presented the sole source report, as well as a summary of awarded bids between $25,000 and $100,000. That summary is on page seven of the board packet. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facility Planning, gave a monthly update on capital infrastructure, and this report is on page 13 of the packet. He also reviewed a report on financial status of facilities master plan projects, and that is on page 14 of the packet. Tom Legano, Vice President of Information Services and Chief--
Information?
Information, thank you. Information Officer, introduced Sandra Warner, Deputy Chief Information Officer and Director of Administration and Computer Services. Sandra provided a quarterly update on projects in Information Services. This report begins on page 15 of the packet. Next, Ms. Warner gave a review of the access control responsibilities and activities for this past year, and discussed plans for future improvements. The management committee has several recommendations to present this evening. The first, Barbara Larson presented a draft of the 2018-2019 management committee working agenda as presented on pages two and three of your packet, and the recommendation is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2018-2019 working agenda, and I will make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second recommendation tonight from the management committee came from Rachel Leers. She presented recommendations related to the college's fiscal 2018-2019 budget. The notice of public hearing is on page four of the board packet and states that the Board will hold its public hearing on the budget in August. And therefore, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize publication of the notice of public hearing form for the 2018-2019 budget, subject to the adjustment of actual expenditure figures which are available. Furthermore, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize the publication of notice of vote for the 2018-2019 budget at a later date, and I would make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Why the need, Mr. Chair, to separate the notice of vote for a later date?
The second one is a statutory requirement. I think anytime you accept more in revenues than the prior year, you have to vote separately on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Question, any other questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The third recommendation was one based on request for proposal, and it was a recommendation for the athletic team charter bus service. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the annual contract with cross-road tours for the regular season athletic team charter bus in the amount not to exceed $85,000, or in the amount of $85,867 postseason athletic charter bus service as needed based on the amount not to exceed $40,608, and an additional $12,647.50 to allow for contingencies, possible unforeseen cost, for total expenditure not to exceed $139,122.50 for athletic team charter bus services, and I would make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Before I continue, I would ask if trustee Musil or trustee Snyder have anything to add relating to the management committee?
I do not.
I was not at the meeting, so I appreciate your update.
Finally, before I conclude my report, I want to acknowledge the retirement in this month's board packet. Mitch Borgers, College Associate Vice President for Business Services, will be retiring at the end of this month. He has-- Mitch, I know you're there. Oh, there you are. He has admirably served the college for nearly 27 years. As someone who has gotten to know Mitch through his work on the management committee, Mitch, I want to thank you for your professionalism and your tremendous work and service to the college. Thank you very much. If we had a vote, I would vote no.
Dave, can I just say something?
Yes. Mitch, on behalf of the college, I want to thank you for your years of exemplary service. I mean, over all the years that I've known you and all the areas that you've supervised, they just run in prime shape. Any issues we've ever had, you've addressed them so professionally, and with so much empathy for anyone who might have raised any issues at all. So I just want to thank you. It was a pleasure to serve with you, and I'm probably the highest compliment is that you have the respect and admiration of everyone who works here, anyone you've ever worked with. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mitch, we will miss you, and Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Lindstrom. Mitch, I don't really have anything to add to what's been said except this. When your predecessors left, I think there were some that were saying, oh, my goodness, what are we going to do now? And then you came along, and now I'm sure we're sitting here saying now, what do we do next month? But you came along, and you've trained people very, very well. And so your footprint and legacy were on this campus prior to your current position and will be here thereafter. So thank you very much for everything you've done. You've always been steady, ready, and we appreciate that very much. Wish you the best, my friend. President's recommendations. First item is the treasurer's report. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board packet contains the treasurer's report for the month ended May 31, 2018. Some items of note include, page one of the treasurer's report is the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. May was the 11th month of the college's 2017-2018 fiscal year, and during the month of May, the college made scheduled payments on the Series 2011, 2012, and 2015 revenue bonds totaling $237,225, which are reflected in the revenue bond debt service fund in the treasurer's report. An ad valorem tax distribution of $39.5 million was received from Johnson County, excuse me, from the Johnson County Treasurer during June and will be included in next month's report. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of May 31, 2018, in all funds was $93.4 million, which is approximately $13.6 million higher than at the same time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits, and it is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended on May 31, 2018, subject to audit.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ingram, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Cross. Monthly report to the Board, Dr. Sopchak.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. You've all received the president's report here, a little lengthy document that kind of details a lot of what's happening on campus and all the various departments. I'm just going to cover a few things. First of all, the Council of Presidents for the community colleges in Kansas got together, kind of like almost in a near spontaneous meeting, to discuss some key issues. I want to share some of those issues with you. The first thing is concurrent enrollment. About 20% to 25% of our enrollment here is concurrent, which means classes that are taught in the high schools by high school faculty but who have the proper credentials. It's a big part of what we do. There was an effort last year in the legislature to make that more accessible across the state. And to do that, the issue is, it falls on the backs of the community colleges to get it done, but how would community colleges be reimbursed? So that's the big topic of discussion among community colleges in general. Through a lot of calculations, the community colleges believe that they should receive $183 per credit hour, which would be $550 per student, per course. It's a little bit different for us because we're able to use high school faculty, whereas other schools don't have that luxury throughout Kansas, so it's much more expensive, and they use full-time faculty for this. So it is an issue. We're on record of saying that, how we are set up here, that we could do it in the neighborhood of $60 a credit hour. So you can see the discussion that's going on across the state. That's concurrent. Who knows if that issue's ever going to be resolved. Property tax relief. Among the community colleges across Kansas, a big issue is property tax relief, as their local mill levies are extremely high. Back in '99, when SB 345 was enacted, they eliminated out-of-county reimbursement. So for some schools, we do charge a premium for students who come from outside of Johnson County. A lot of community colleges across Kansas do not. There are other opportunities for increased revenue that they don't take advantage of because of their interest in growing enrollment that way. So that's another issue. Property tax relief will always be a big deal. General education funding hasn't been looked at for many years, while the focus has been technical education funding. So those schools that are reliant upon general ed, they're in need of greater revenue. And also, another issue is called re-centering. Currently, we are reimbursed by the state the same amount every year regardless if our enrollment goes up or down. Our enrollment has slid, while other enrollments in about five schools have grown. So you have, if you look at all the community colleges in Kansas, you have five states or five schools with growing enrollment, and that would be 14 schools with declining enrollment. The challenge is to re-center that, so now everyone would be reimbursed accordingly. During the recession, our enrollment jumped 10%. So the way it was set up is that we were getting less money per individual student at that time. Now, we're getting more money per individual student than we were, but some of these other schools are not. That would cost us about $900,000 that we would have to basically redistribute to another school. So it'll be an interesting debate over the time ahead. Service areas are always discussed as other schools are critically looking to expand their programming. The bottom line is that when it comes to a position for the community colleges, we have one vote. We just have one vote, despite, regardless of how big we are. We do a third of concurrent across the state, yet on these issues, we just have one vote. So that's a part of being, that's what we get for being part of the statewide organization. So I just wanted to share that with you. I also want to introduce Dr. Leroy Cox. Dr. Cox, you might want to wave. Dr. Cox is our new dean of business. We welcome Leroy. We're glad to have you onboard, so thank you for coming out to the meeting tonight. I want to read to you a letter that I received from Gretchen Thum. This was a letter she received from a student. I won't say his name. Gretchen is our Associate Professor of Journalism and Media Communications. She does all kinds of great things. She brings VML here on campus. John Cook, their CEO, speaks to our students. If you ever get a chance when they're on campus, you should stop by. They do a great job. They'll bring about 10 or 12 staffers as well. So here's the letter. The subject is "Just Wanted to Say Thanks." Odds are, you probably don't remember me because we didn't have much real-life interaction. You helped me get an internship at 610 Sports Radio in 2014. I wasn't really sure what I wanted to do or where I wanted to go, but I knew sports was my passion. I got hired within a couple of months after I started my internship. Fast forward a few years later, after countless hours of work on and off the clock, I'm now a full-time radio producer and personality at 610. Without that first step that you made possible, I wouldn't have made it to this point, and I just wanted to say thank you for helping me when I needed some direction to find the passion in my life. I'm highly focused on my career, but I'm trying to carve out time to help other young people break into the business because I know how hard it can be and what it takes. Even in my busy day-to-day life, I try to remember the hardship I've gone through to make it here and appreciate the accomplishments that I've made so far. I just wanted to remember to thank you because you were one of the first people who made this possible for me. This is what we do here, and this is how members of our faculty and our staff shape the lives of many of our students. So I wanted to thank Gretchen for forwarding this, and thank the faculty and staff that are a part of these types of things every day, because we do inspire students to learn and succeed here at Johnson County Community College. So, thank you, Dr. Cook.
Thank you. Any questions of Dr. Sopchak? Reports from board liaisons. I don't think we have any old business or new business, so reports from board liaisons. Faculty Association, Dr. Harvey.
Well, I just want to start by saying that I really appreciate the NICU nurse that shared her story of being a student here. You know, this is a very special place, and we have a lot of very special students and faculty and staff, and I love hearing about how people were able to, you know, just better their lives through this institution. So thank you so much for sharing that. We have not yet reached a contract agreement. Of course, that is a very important thing to the faculty. We are still willing to continue to negotiate. So that's where we are. My report today is somewhat inspired by an article that I read. It's from last summer. It was in a publication put out by the National Education Association's Higher Ed Journal, and it was an article entitled, it's by John Messier, entitled "Shared Governance and Academic Freedom: Yes, This is Union Work." And it seemed appropriate to talk about those two items, and especially their relevance to a union, a faculty union. Shared governance is a complex partnership. It promotes collaboration, shared decision-making and accountability in the whole operation of the college. Everyone has a role to play, and some groups are given primary authority over specific areas, but there has to be a mutual interdependence among all the stakeholders because decisions impact more than just one area. They impact a lot of other areas as well. And those that are involved in a lot of different things realize that, of course, all those connections. Typically, faculty are given primary responsibility and authority over curriculum, pedagogy, faculty status, and scholarship. But it's also critical that the faculty can make recommendations on financial matters and decisions that impact academic programs and our students. This is a complicated balance, of course, of who is ultimately responsible for decisions, and, you know, what does it look like for faculty to give input into decision-making? That's the million-dollar question, right? I would say that the primary role of the FA is definitely advocacy. And within that, our role on campus has a number of features that support shared governance. We're invited to speak here, like I am tonight. We're regularly asked to select faculty to serve on most of the really important committees at this institution, ranging from planning to policy to hiring. In the role of FA president, I'm given a seat at the table to ask questions and comment on all sorts of decisions. I was in one just today where we talked about the policy of naming buildings and rooms on campus. And so that's part of shared governance, right? In each of these instances, I do my best to think about what my colleagues would want, what would be in the best interest of the students that we teach in our classrooms. Now, I've also been hearing over the past several years from various people at various times that the FA is not able to adequately deal with academic freedom issues. This was something I heard actually from other faculty from time to time, and it's an idea that was promoted and perpetuated on our campus. And I can tell you, I've been in this position for exactly two months, and I don't believe that we have an academic freedom problem at this institution. However, I will tell you that I have already had two completely different situations with completely different faculty in different areas on this campus where I found myself advocating for issues directly related to academic freedom on their behalf. And the reason I say that we don't have a problem here is just because we received immediately a tremendous amount of support from the administrators that we took our problem to. So they were in full agreement that, yes, in fact, this was not okay, but I do know that this is very much union work. Academic freedom and promoting that is very much an integral part of what we do, because, like I said, I've already-- like I said, I've already had two instances just in the last two months. So, shared governance is union work, and academic freedom is also union work. They are both directly connected to working conditions, and they're both hallmarks of quality institutions of higher ed. And I think the reason that you've seen our faculty express a desire to negotiate items that involve both of these is because we do have a desire to solidify our rights and our responsibilities and our role in these areas in more official ways, instead of them just being sort of understood, but to actually document some of those. And when it comes to morale, certainly appropriate compensation for work is very, very important. But working conditions is also important, and anytime rights and responsibilities of employees are dismissed, or there's a perception that they're not fully valued, it does seem like a loss to those employees, and that impacts morale, too. So, these are items that are also very near, near and dear to us as faculty, and they're very much a part of the work of our union, and so I just wanted to share that with you tonight. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Harvey. Appreciate that very much. Comments, questions? Trustee Musil.
Did I get a bathroom named after me or anything?
It's going to cost you.
Good answer.
I just want to say, I mean, Dr. McLeod is not here, and, and I think that the fact that we now have an academic freedom statement on campus, it's an official policy, is helpful. I don't, I agree, I don't think we've seen an academic freedom issue that hasn't been able to be resolved. Because of that effort, I learned when I was Chair and Collegiate Steering that there, about the AAUP's academic freedom statement, which I think was first nineteen forty and updated in nineteen seventy-two, and I read it, and I, I agreed with it one-hundred percent. As with other topics that have come up here tonight, the problem is that it involves judgment calls, like the other things we do here, and I appreciate the fact that I've always felt like I could have a dialogue with you and a discussion, and if we disagreed, we still smiled at each other, and we didn't hit each other or anything else. I think academic freedom is everyone's job. It may be union work, but it's all our work, and I hope, I'm glad to hear that in the recent things you had to advocate for, that those, that right was recognized and the balance and consensus was reached on those. I think that's a, a good start in your first two months.
Good. I also want to add, though, that it had, there has been an interest in, from the Faculty Association, in having an academic freedom part in our master agreement as well, and that's not uncommon. A lot of unions across the country have had sections in their master agreements that have, that speak to academic freedom, and it's just more of, you know, our academic dean can put, our Vice President of Academic Affairs can put a statement on a website, but that is a top-down statement declaration. When something goes into our contract, it is a mutual agreement that we have both agreed upon that it's, it's important, and so it's a, it has a different kind of existence.
I appreciate that. I hope faculty acknowledges that we have a statement, and that we haven't had, to my knowledge, huge issues with academic freedom.
I, I don't think-
It is, it will constantly be a prob- it will constantly be a topic of discussion.
Right, and I, and I, that's kind of what I wanted to establish, that it is part of what we do. We deal with academic freedom, but we've also had a very positive, I've had very positive interactions. Anytime there is a small issue that comes up, it's immediately recognized that, you know, that it was a problem and that wasn't okay, and I, so at that's, in that sense, I don't feel like this institution has an overall academic freedom problem, not that I've seen, but I have witnessed, so just individual issues that come up from time to time, and, and people that need to be reminded, so.
I appreciate your attitude.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate it very much. Johnson County Research Triangle, Trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, I have a very brief report tonight. Just want to remind everyone, the last time J-Cert met was on Monday, May seventh, at KU campus, and then the next meeting is at, on November seventh, at Kansas State Aletha Campus, and that's just FYI, but the good news is that June sales tax receipts in Johnson County for J-Cert were one million five-hundred thousand fifty-seven dollars and fifteen cents, which is almost eleven and a half percent more than 2017. That concludes my report.
Any questions of Trustee Lindstrom? Trustee Snyder?
Uh, trustee, my recollection is the college does not get any J-Cert funds, is that correct?
That's true.
That's correct. We're just part of the steering committee because we're part of the community in forward thinking on education issues.
The Government Committee, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good question. We have a seat at the table, but no revenue. Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, that should now be Ms. Ingram, as she is the official representation, if you'll make that change in the agenda that she'll be giving the report. So, you have a report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. While, while the meeting was going on, he leaned over and said, "There will be an orientation, and it will be a week," but anyway, no, I don't have a report this evening. We do meet again in September at Highland Community College, so I will be there at that time, and appreciate the opportunity to take over where you have left. Several of us have had the opportunity to attend those meetings in the past, and I think we all understand the, the respect that Johnson County Community College has, and so likewise, when you were changing your position, it was Dr. Cook who nominated me for the secretary position, and Greg Musil looked at me and said, "Did you know about that?" I did. But anyway, they have a lot of respect for you, so I know that they're looking forward to that transition being very smooth.
And for those of you that missed the last meeting, she was elected Secretary of KECT, so she is an official officer of the organization.
Mr. Chairman, she, she also shared with me that, as coming back from Colorado, she stopped, or going out, she stopped at Colby to drive around the campus and ran into the president, and so she has already started her ambassadorship, because I'm sure that went around the campus very quickly, that a Johnson County Community College trustee member cared enough to stop and look at Colby Community College, so.
Outpost.
She'll do a great job.
That is impressive, to be way out there and make that stand. Foundation, Ms. Ingram.
The Foundation did not meet this month, so I do not have a report.
Thank you. The next item is the Consent Agenda. It's an item where we deal with a lot of routine items. If anybody has any item to pull off, and I will get to you, Becky, in a second, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have one item that Becky needs to clarify on the item before we vote and approve, so Becky, if you would address that issue.
On the bottom of page four and the top of page five, there's six entries that show a thousand plus dollars per hour. The clarification is actually a thousand plus dollars per credit hour, so we said it just per hour. And those are six, six people, starting with Ty Edwards and ending with Tanya, so just who pay per credit hour.
Give that page again, Becky.
Bottom of page four, there's two entries, and the top of page five, there's four entries.
Page forty and forty-one of the Board Packet.
Oh, okay.
Forty, okay.
Of the HR report.
Any questions about that? It should read credit hour rather than hour. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have an executive session tonight. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of reviewing annual legal guidance related to trustee policies in consultation with legal counsel pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, exception relating to matters determined privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The session will last twenty minutes. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Barbara Larson, Chris Gray, Terry Schlist, and Tanya Wilson. I would like a motion to do so.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll start at, need a ten-minute or five-minute break? What do you need?
Five.
Five-minute break, we'll start at six oh five.
That's confusing for the public.
We are out of the executive session, back in open session. No action was taken. Before we adjourn, Trustee Snyder, any closing comments for tonight?
No, but thank you for the opportunity.
Trustee Lawson.
No.
Trustee Musil.
Beautifully run meeting.
Trustee Lindstrom.
Happy summer.
Trustee Cross.
No, thank you.
And Trustee Ingram.
No, thank you.
Thank you all for attending. Have a great August, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yes.
We are adjourned.